The 14 November 2023 Planning Commission meeting is called to order. We will be following a modified Roberts Rules of Order. When we get to the business portion of the meeting, we'll ask the city staff to read the resolution. Then the city planner will do the staff report. Then there'll be discussion among city commissioners and the city planner. Then if the applicant is present, we'll ask the applicant to come forward. And after discussion with the applicant, the resolution, then we'll go ahead and ask for members of the public present to address and come forward and speak for or against the resolution. I ask when you come forward to the podium to address the commissioners, you begin by stating your name and your address. If there are no objections from anyone in attendance to the aforementioned meeting procedures, would everyone please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in? Let it be known that all persons present to provide testimony at this 14 November 2023 meeting of the Planning Commission hereby swear or affirm said testimony will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth. All those in agreement, please say I do. All those opposed, please say opposed. Hearing none, thank you. You may be seated. If you have not already recorded your name and address information in the guest's sign book, sign-in book at the rear of the room, we ask that you please do so before exiting the meeting. This information becomes part of the permanent record and documents who was in attendance at the meeting. At this time, could you call the roll?
Mr. Koenig?
Present.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Bupp?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum to conduct the meeting. Since we only have four commissioners, in order for a resolution to pass, you must have a, at least three commissioners say aye or in the affirmative. If there's two opposed and two in the affirmative, the resolution fails. Or it could also pass with all four commissioners in agreement and saying aye. Next thing we'll come to is the meeting minutes of October 14, 2023. Are there any additions, deletions, or edits that need to be made? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 14, 2023?
So moved. Second.
We have a move and a second. All in favor of approving the minute, meeting minutes of October 14, 2023, say aye. Aye. The meeting minutes of October 14, 2023 are approved. Old business, there is no old business. New business, we're gonna, there's two resolutions. We're gonna move, start with resolution number PC 33-23. There was some notice that wasn't adequate, so we're gonna, do I have a move to table resolution number PC 33-23?
So moved. Second.
We have a move and a second to table resolution number PC 33-23. Could you poll the commissioners?
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Bupp?
Aye.
Mr. Koenig?
Aye. Resolution number PC 33-23 is tabled till the next meeting. Now we'll move to resolution number PC 32-23. If you could read the resolution?
Resolution PC 20, excuse me, 32-23, a resolution to authorize a special use for a dog grooming company to be located at 413 North Main Street, parcel in 44-000840, zoned D S X downtown shop front mixed use.
Thank you. Could we have the staff report, please?
Certainly. Basically, this application came through my office for a dog groomer in the downtown shop front district. Upon seeing that and conducting with the code as it existed, stated that indoor animal care, it was a special use, needed approval. We advised the applicant, who said that she had been in business or had perhaps done it in the building, but maybe not had been putting things out. We talked with people from Main Street Pickwa as far as, I mean, staff there and some other people had voiced concerns over it, who said that it had been, been out for not a few months, but rather a few years. At any rate, because of just those preliminary findings, I felt it was in the best interest to apply for the special use per the zoning book, right, wrong, or indifferent, because that's what that situation's for. The downtown shop front district, it's intended for a mix of uses in a pedestrian-oriented environment that prioritizes retail and other commercial uses. And following with the code, the code permits a retail use and a restaurant use fairly without question. Everything else is set up for, to bring in active, what do you wanna call it, pedestrian, citizen shoppers, just keeping people in and out of the, in and out of the district. You know, additionally, the indoor animal care, it's defined as a completely enclosed, soundproof indoor facility designed or arranged for a care of animals without any actuaritivity. Upon kind of our findings and some concerns that we had heard, it seemed like there was some situations with barking dogs. And there were some other issues with the facility and how it was being cared for, but we ultimately determined that per the zoning code that was passed in May, it wanted those retail and those restaurant uses. So the staff recommends denial of the indoor animal special care use because it is not encouraging the pedestrian traffic that the district is asking for.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I thought I heard that there was the Main Street Board had voted on this item. Was it their board or their?
So Roxanne may be able to speak on this more, but it looks like this use was approved by Planning Commission in 2018. Don't quote me on that, I believe that's what it was. At that same time, Main Street Pickwa had voted to deny it. What superseded what, obviously it was before my time, so I can't say for sure, but obviously the business was open for some time. Basically, taking it from a new point of view, they were applying for this, the book said that it had to be done, so I recommended coming here. As far as I know now, under the new code, it does not require that same authorization from Main Street Pickwa.
The special use had been approved in 2018, and as I recall, Main Street Pickwa opposed the special use at that time.
Correct.
How long is the special use valid for?
A special use is valid as long as that applicant continues to maintain that use. It would be a grandfathered use under a new code. One of my conversations with the applicant was that if you could provide sufficient evidence that the business had not went out, you know, maybe that's a discussion for a different time. She did bring in receipts of some work that she had done, they were backdated with permission of her tenant, or the, with the people that had paid for them. I just thought with the situation surrounding, and then kind of everyone else saying that it had been vacant for some time, that I felt it was best to come back here to be ruled upon by the commission.
So was it vacant for two years?
When it, when the original application came to me, the existing use said storage. So coming for me, it was not a continued use. I believe it was applied for, it was either late August or early September, right when I had come. The application said that it was being used as storage presently, and because of the switch from storage to indoor animal care, I advocated for the special use. When kind of the discussion happened, that they in fact stated that they did not ever quit doing that, Main Street Pickwa at the time came back and stated that it's been vacant for quite some time, as has several of the, I believe, business owners in the area.
So the code requires continued use of the special use, otherwise it lapses.
Has to come into conformance, correct.
Okay. Any other questions of the city staff? Is the applicant present? Could you come forward, state your name and address and?
Roxanne Winthrop, 820 Codwell Street.
What's, I didn't hear your name?
Roxanne Winthrop, 820 Codwell Street.
Okay. So I get the, do you intend to continue your pet grooming operation?
Yes.
I guess the, the issue is, is the, it was approved in 2018?
Mm-hmm.
It's 2023, five years later.
Mm-hmm.
The city's planner is advising us that, that it was used for storage and not used for the intended use of the special use? How long, what's your view on that?
I had left my business for Morgan Winthrop to run it. She ran it for a few years, 'cause I had to go to Florida, 'cause my mother was dying, and I had to take care of her. And then she decided to up and move down the street as her own business, as Alas Barkson Bubbles. As of that time, I had come back and I was just doing part-time, and I was also using it as storage, because obviously, if I'm not doing 20 to 30 dogs a day out of there, there's no sense of me, I don't need the whole area. So I just had the one room that was the bathing area that I was grooming in, and the rest of it, I was storing my mom's belongings. So I find, found a place for everything and what to do with everything. So it was used for storage, but it was, I was still grooming out of the back part.
So how long was between the time Morgan Winthrop was operating the business and you started operating the business? She left. How long a period of time was that?
Maybe three months.
Three months.
I was just not doing it as a full-time position. I was having back problems, and therefore I could not, and I still don't intend on doing that many dogs a day out of there. I feel that having that many dogs in a small facility causes animals to become anxious and feeling of insecurity, which causes issues with grooming, being able to calm them down and do an effective job for the, you know, and plus with all the, for instance, barking, that wouldn't be an issue, 'cause you wouldn't have 10 dogs in there barking, or 20 dogs in there barking at a time. I do not plan on having that kind of volume in there.
Have you done anything to help with the soundproofing?
I didn't know there was an issue with the soundproofing.
Okay. Well, there is. And the sound is getting through the walls, from what I understand.
Okay.
And that's an issue that you can understand how that would be an issue to other folks, right?
Mm-hmm, yes. That's, that's another reason that, like I said, I do not plan on ever having that kind of volume, because like I said, it causes a lot of anxiety for dogs. And when dogs are anxious and they feel insecure, they wanna bite, they want to bark, they want to, you know, and to groom a, have you ever tried to groom a child that's throwing a temper tantrum, cut their hair?
Yeah.
Except for dogs have hair everywhere. So I mean, it just makes it more difficult, and that's not the kind of grooming that I want to do. My grooming is more aimed toward the concern of the dog's health and its emotional state, and also being able to get the job done without causing the dog anxiety and, you know, emotional distress, because that's what happens in a lot of dog grooming places. They're more worried about how many dogs they can get out of the door, rather than the animal itself.
Well, regardless of the number of dogs, if you're not soundproofed, there's gonna be barking, you, I mean, dogs bark, right?
Well, I mean, I can get it soundproofed. I mean, the, I mean, there's plenty of room between the walls, the walls have, there's gaps, you know, where the drywall is, I mean, I can put soundproofing in.
I guess, how many hours a week do you, I mean, you're, you're downsizing your operation, you're having storage, you're gonna continue to storage, I guess?
I have, I have most of the stuff out of this. The only thing I have basically now is in the basement. Everything's been moved to the basement, or it's been moved out.
But how many hours a week would you work in the, you're, it's gonna be a sole proprietor, you're not gonna have any employees, is that what I'm hearing?
Not for the moment. If I have, if I do get any employees, it's not gonna be that many, and I'm still not going to have that kind of volume, because it takes two to three hours to groom one dog, and I don't see the point of having 10 dogs in there with only two groomers when it takes that kind of time to be able to start a dog from, start to finish, and have all these animals in there.
So the question is like, how many hours did you work last week in there?
How many hours I worked last week? I wanna say less than 10.
And how, what's your intent to work?
My intent is to be open at least four days a week, approximately five to six hours a day. And I also do weekends, and I know that, I don't think any businesses are open down there all on Sundays. And I offer Sundays because a lot of my clients, they work second shift, so it's, you know, by the time they get up, it's just, it's more convenient for them to come on a weekend, rather than to come through the week.
And your intent is to have it continuously open for the foreseeable future?
There were also some complaints on a dog going to the bathroom outside.
See, that wasn't me, that would've been Morgan. I've never, I don't, I do not take any dogs outside to use the bathroom at all, when I was running it at all. I know Morgan has her own personal dogs that she takes into her shop, and I know when she lets him out, they just run and go, which is literally on the next block up by the other tattoo shop there on the corner. I do not, I've never taken dogs outside to go, they're not there that long. I mean, they're only there, like I said, two to three hours tops, and...
But when the business was open, under your ownership, this was going on, right?
I didn't know until I came back that it was going on.
Okay. And then there was also complaints about trash and lack of cleaning on the outside, is that, are you aware of that?
That was from previous tenants that I have evicted.
Yeah, you have two tenants in the upper floors.
I only have one right now.
One tenant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And they haven't complained about the dogs or any?
No.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I guess the question I have is, if the last time you owned it, we've had all these issues, why would we wanna go back to that? I know, I know you say it's gonna change, but if you look to your history, you see what's gonna happen in the future. So how, how do you address all these items that are negative?
Well, for one, I'm not gonna let somebody else run it for me, especially family. That seems to be a big problem, family, they just think they can just do what they want, and you're gonna be okay with it, like, like, you know. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure you, I'm sure you guys have children, I'm sure you've experienced some things of children, just, oh, it's my dad's, I can just do what I wanna do with it, you know, no big deal.
But you're still responsible for all that was going on there.
Yeah.
And?
And if it was brought to my attention at the time, I would have dealt with it, but like I said, I didn't even know of any of this until after I came back.
Okay, well, I, you see, the issue we have is, we've got all these issues, and now you're saying it's not gonna happen again, and, and you probably should've been more aware of what was going on previously anyway, right?
Well, it would've been nice if people were complaining if I was told about it, if I was addressed. I mean, if people are complaining, you guys, you should, I mean, the city, somebody should be getting hold of the owner of the building and letting the owner of the building know what's going on. You would, I mean, that's what I would think. Isn't that what the city normally does?
Has, has the city ever issued you a code violation?
No.
If I can, the complaints that we received were after posting for the meeting, at least the ones that was turned in to us.
When I was told I had to come in and redo this, I have not had a one dog down there. So there should be no complaints, 'cause there's been no dogs down there at all. I have, only thing I've done down there is clean, and I decorated for Halloween, and that was it. I have not been doing business out of there since I was told I could not and had to redo So if there's complaints about dogs barking, it did not come from my business, because there has been no dogs in there.
Okay. Any other questions of commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Winthrop. Are there anyone else present that would like to speak for or against resolution number
Rick Walker, Rick Walker, 526 North Wayne. I'm gonna oppose to this as a business owner in that block, reopening of that business, 'cause the, it's not been taken care of, it was a mess, so.
What is your view? I mean, do you work close by, or what's?
We have a building that's right next door, and we have a building at the end of the block, so.
You have a building next door to this one?
Yes, yes, sir.
To the north or south?
Uh, the south.
South?
The tattoo parlor that's next door, in that building.
What's the name of that one?
It's a tattoo place, right?
She's renamed it, I, what's, what's she renamed it? Yeah, Iron Broads or something, something.
Okay.
And specifically, what, what have you seen specifically?
Trash in front, the tenants will take dumpsters from any business behind, we've complained to the city a number of times. Our dumpsters would disappear, they'd end up, or they'd get full of dirty diapers, all kinds, and there's trash in the front of the building, so.
Can I say something to that? Like I said, I have evicted, there's tenants that were doing that.
You've been batting down with all, all this stuff happening, I sent pictures today, and those were, I've had a meeting with Paul about the issue with the building being neglected and not taken care of, so.
You're more than welcome to give a look at the building now. I've been working on it, I've had a good look.
Ma'am, we're gonna hear from Mr. Walker.
That's, that's my, that's my.
And I prefer not having back and forth between someone coming forward, but if we have questions, we can call you back up.
That's my, that's where I stand with this issue.
The what?
That's where I stand with this issue, is that...
Okay, you're opposed.
I'm opposed. All righty.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Anyone else either wanna speak either for or against resolution number PC 32-23?
Mindy Gregerson, 415 North Main. There were a couple days when Ms. Winthrop came back, that she did, she was open, and I don't know how many dogs were over there, but they were very vocal. The last time that the place was open, we did complain, we worked with Lorna Swisher, and we ended up, she had signs printed about dogs pooping. It's nothing like walking in your back door and stepping in, and it's not your own dog. The building has not been cared for, I have problems with renters on the second floor, parking out front all day long. Saturday was a good example, two days, the car sat there. I just, it's, it's not the ideal use for downtown space. And given the barking dogs, I don't wanna listen to them again. It doesn't matter if it's only one or two, you can still hear it. So I am really opposed to it, and I feel for Ms. Winthrop, I know she wants to use her building, but, you know, we've, we've seen a stove sitting out there for Harvest Festival, there's been trash containers out front, there's filth out on the sidewalk, just a number of things that just, the building is not cared for and maintained. And the dogs, even a couple, you can hear them in my building, and I'm right next door. So I'm opposed to it.
You're in the lamp shop?
Yes, it's where Patton Bob's Lamp Shop was.
What's in there now?
The mercantile.
Mercantile?
I've been there for almost six years.
Okay.
And I...
Well, I have a picture here, and I went down there and I didn't note the...
You probably have one of the old ones when the building was pink and broken apart shutters.
It is pink.
Yeah, it is.
It's not now, it's a nice green with burgundy trim. And my late husband and I have spent a ton of money on that building. It's been painted front and back, it's been re-roofed, a lot of money and, and care has been taken. So I, after six years, I really wanna keep, see the downtown use the code Pickwa the way it should be.
Okay.
Thank you.
One second, the, I'm gonna read into the record. This is the only thing that we've received from any other citizen?
Was that lying?
And I didn't know you were gonna be here, but it's from you to the Planning Commission. I'm writing this because I am against a special use permit for a dog grooming business at 413 North Main Street. I own and operate my business at 415 North Main Street, and for the following reasons don't wanna see the special use permit granted. Barking dogs, dogs being allowed to go behind other properties and defecate, both of which happened when the business was there before, overall cleanliness of the property. Code Pickwa was developed for a reason, and that was to have more retail spaces downtown. We need to hold the code so that with time, we can have a thriving downtown. While I sympathize with the property owner, the space has been empty since the other groomer moved a couple years ago, and no effort to rent or upkeep the space. Please hold to the code so that maybe the space will be available for retail use and benefit our downtown area. Thank you for taking the time to consider this matter. Mindy Gregerson. And then included with the email is, there's actually a picture from Rich Walker, who was up here before, and it's a picture of the, the property with appears to be some form of trash in the area in the front, on the front street. And then in the back from Mr. Walker is some pictures of refuse, random, looked like trash in the back of the building, and, and then another, three pictures of trash in the back of the building. Those are the only items other that we've received for consideration on this matter, except for the testimony so far. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against resolution number PC 32-23? Hearing none, is there any further discussion among the commissioners?
I have a question for the city. We mentioned that she, the, is it your sister that?
My daughter-in-law.
Daughter-in-law, moved to the next block and opened up her own pet grooming business, right? Has there been complaints about that business to the city of similar nature to what was, what she was getting complaints about running this business?
Not that I've received. And I, and I mean, maybe we only got the... And I, and I mean, maybe we only got these because we put it out there, we send out mailers because of what's going on and that's what we received, but I haven't received. But I've only, I haven't been here very long either, so.
Might be something to follow up on, to talk to neighbors and see if not the same operations taking place at that space as well. Just a thought.
Any other discussion? Questions, complaint? Okay, at this time, is there a motion?
I guess by rights, we're making a motion to.
Approve.
Approve it.
Right.
I'll make a motion to tick the vote.
Motion to approve resolution number PC 32 dash 23. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number PC 32 dash 23. Whereas the planning commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and has established findings that indicate the proposed special use expansion will be compatible with the intended use of the real property, will not threaten the general health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding properties, and the adjacent properties will not be negatively affected. Granting the special use does not consume critical land resources that are uniquely suited to facilitate the needs of the community for economic development and other important needs, and conforms to all other applicable plans, policies, and regulations of the city.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should kind of look at these issues in depth a little bit.
Go ahead.
Will it be compatible with the intended use of the real property? I'm not sure it is. If, if in fact our code says that, that those are to be retail spaces and it requires a special use just to go in, then it may not be necessarily compatible with the intended use.
But if you have the option of a special use, then that would.
It's, it's allowed.
Of course, that's an option anywhere for anything.
Well, not, special uses list specific items and, but it needs to be.
Is that one specifically listed as, as a special use it is?
Yeah, so I think it would fit if approved. I, I, you see what I mean?
Yeah.
So I, I, I think, in my opinion, it, it's compatible because the option.
It's a special use.
If they do, yeah, so.
Right, the, the way the code is written, you have the, the, there's intended use of real properties and there are specific special uses for this. And so that would come under the umbrella of intended use of this real property, in my view. Okay, move on to the next one?
Will not threaten the general health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding properties and the adjacent property values will not negatively be affected. Again, we're in the, we're in the conundrum of if it is run correctly, possibly not. If it is run historically, yes, it would be a problem. Other than the soundproofing, which would have to be done to be run correctly. You follow me?
Yeah, wouldn't he?
Because that does impact the neighboring properties.
Yeah, right.
And the dog, the dog waste certainly does too. And trash, you know, but again, that's historically. And the owner says that isn't how she runs her business.
She runs it and it was another person in there, but it was under her.
She wasn't.
She was the owner.
She was still ultimately responsible.
Right.
Yeah, I think this is the one that, that I, I would say is the most important of the four that we look at and it, it seems like it doesn't help the property values and welfare the way it's been run.
And, and I think the last two are also contingent upon a special use. Whether they are, you know.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think it all comes down to the second, the second one that we've been talking about. And that's, that's a little gray.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, we've had our discussion. If you could poll the commissioners?
Mr. Harvey?
Hi.
Mr. Koenig?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Nay.
Mr. Bupp?
Nay.
The resolution has failed. The special use is not granted. That concludes our business for today, or is there any other business?
Since in regard, I just wanted to say for PC 33 23, that failure was mostly mine. We were working on a project for lockdown storage. One of the reasons we denied the initial and made them switch to that south property, if you recall, was for the lack of road right of way that was to be dedicated. So the plat that they brought to us split those properties and had the roadway, the right-of-way dedication on it. I didn't get that to Emily enough time to get that notification sent out properly. So we kind of made the decision to try to have it removed or tabled for next month. But that will be on next month and that's, for lack of better words, I mean, that's what you have. That's, that's what we came up with to make that property work. Secondly, at the next meeting, at the meeting next month, I am going to present a list of items that I have found since, you know, I started at September 1st, of some things to clear up some ambiguity with Code Pickwa and how it was adopted. I think actually having it in action for two months, it's an outstanding document. But there are some areas that are a little bit clear or unclear. There's definitions in guarding what constitutes industrial uses that we've ran into with foundry work and some different variations of that that aren't specifically explained. We've ran into some issues with screening and what constitutes adequate screening. On our new subdivision, we had some issues with landscaping and kind of the implementation of it. I think all the bases are there, but there's some things that in practice, just, they're either not definitive or could just use a little bit of cleaning up. And then there is a host of clerical errors we've ran across. There's a couple of sentences that just kind of end abruptly and I think something got left off. And I believe we had a few pages worth of comments from engineering that we did not implement as well. So it's my intent to present that to you. One, what it actually says and what we believe the intention or where we'd want to go through to move forward. But I'll have that ready for next month.
It was anticipated that there would be some modification. I think we even had a process to make any changes to it. Okay, very good.
I mean, for as many pages as it is, I mean, something was going to come up. But, you know, it's just kind of those things, once you get them out there and you see them out there in action, you kind of figure out what might be missing or what could make something a little bit more definitive. And so we've kind of been noting them as we come across them and practice every day. And we'll be presenting a list of that next month.
If anyone ever creates a perfect document, please let me know because it's the first time I've ever seen one, so.
Whoever had a hand in it, it is an extraordinary document, but.
Yes, it is.
But I, everything that comes in, I have to look up, you know, not only not being a Pickwa native, I have to look up the address and then the zoning and then look up and make sure something backs up what I say.
Soon you'll be a native.
What's that?
Say soon you'll be a native that way.
I'm, I'm getting pretty good.
Okay. There's no further items, do we have a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Wait a minute.
We generally only take topics specific. For what?
Okay, this was.
I'm not sure what we're talking about here.
This was supposed to be for, two weeks from now is when it was supposed to be, but we never received. I can, I can address that afterwards.
What are we talking about?
I, I called and I emailed you. I'll, but I'll get, I'll talk to her afterwards. Basically, she has an issue for Board of Zoning Appeals.
Ah, Board of Zoning, we're the planning commission, not the Board of Zoning Appeals. So if you have an issue, the Board of Zoning Appeals is in two weeks.
It's in two weeks, correct.
It'll be Tuesday in two weeks. Generally, for the planning commission, if it's not directly related to the resolution, we don't generally open it for public comment and we don't have any, you know, wild card opening discussion.
Ms. Scott, if you could wait a few minutes, I'll, I'll speak with you.
It's the wrong group.
That's the main thing.
But as a citizen, that other group should hand, should be able to assist you. Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? All in favor of a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.